Mike, what we plan to do is ask you, each board member is going to ask you a question. We respond accordingly. And then we would adjourn from this session, this interview. And during the right wing board meeting, we will then entertain a motion to accept you. And then there'd be a vote, and then you would join us up here at the table. That is the process that we're going. Okay, right?
Yeah. If the board relaxes in, we can't participate until it gets sworn in.
Exactly, yes. There'd be a swearing in, yes. Okay. All right, Mike. You want to come forward?
To the mic?
Yeah, to the mic, that's great. All right, and I'll start with the questioning. And basically is, why do you believe in public education?
I think educating all our children and giving them the skills and the abilities to enter the work world, have relationships with other people, to go to college, to serve our country in the armed forces and other ways, is important to maintaining the culture that we live in with all its freedoms and all its pleasures and all its challenges. And the better educated they are, the better chance we all have to get along.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Mike, in the, looking at your resume, you've got lots of strengths. What do you feel is your biggest weakness and how you plan to overcome it for the members of the board?
Well, I have a lot of weaknesses. I would say my biggest weakness right now is my familiarity with board policies and administrative guidelines has been pretty much limited to intersubstantial athletics and a few other things. I've been spending some time looking at each section of the policies to try to familiarize myself with them beyond what I've, what I learned as the athletic director for the five years that I was here. So, that right now, I think would be my greatest weakness, is just catching up on where the board is and at this point in time, not only policy-wise, but things like LURDA.
Thank you.
I'm next. Mike, if appointed, your role as a board member will be different than your role as a district employee. What's your plan to let go of your old role and embrace your new one?
Well, I look to get as much guidance as I can from the other board members as to how you've done that. I won't be the first person on this board, if selected, to have to deal with past relationships with the professional staff in the Gettysburg area school district. Most importantly, I've always, beyond my family, felt that my integrity was the most important thing in my life. And I've always tried to do the right thing, no matter what position I'm in. And that won't change as I go, as I go forward.
Thank you.
Hello, Mike.
Hi.
Selected for the school board, what other commitments do you have that might compete for your time?
I don't have any other commitments that would compete for my time right now, other than my family and some good friends. I've been on vacation for almost two months, so... My wife encouraged me to do this. And I think that's primarily to get me out of the house, so at least two nights a week. But in all seriousness, I don't have, I'm retired, and there were several good people that encouraged me to think about this, and so here I am.
Good evening, Mike, and thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
For the record, I think there's a lot of parallels with what you did in athletic administration in Howard County, here at Gettysburg, and the things that you will do on the board that will help make you successful. Mike, you're in the deli line at The Giant, and a person comes up to you, and they're a little upset with how a principal, or a coach, or a teacher handled a situation with their child. And they would like you to personally do something about or take action on that. How might you respond to that person?
That's actually already happened. But it wasn't A Giant. But anyway...
That's where it happened to me.
Yes. I'd be as polite as possible, but I would be honest and say that we have an administrative team in the school district that handles those situations, and that it's the board's responsibility to select a superintendent who then fills the staff within the district. And I would try to refer them to the appropriate person that they should talk to in order to resolve the situation.
Thank you.
Mike, I have a rhetorical question. Mike, in all seriousness, I have utmost respect for you as an individual. I want you to know that. You're going to solve all this noise stuff that's around. But one of the things that I think board members ought to wrestle with is who their constituents are. So my rhetorical question to you is, because it changes, is who are your constituents? Are they the students? Are they the parents? Do they include district employees? Do they include the taxpayers? Do they include every citizen of our district? Or is it some other nebulous idea about, you know, the common good? And, and, and the reason why I said it was a rhetorical question is, is because I've learned that it kind of comes and goes in regard to certain things. And just that you reflect on that. It includes all of those folks. Pardon? It includes everyone you mentioned. That's, that's our constituency. Yeah. The whole community. And I forget which policy I was reading, but it was a board policy that it's our responsibility to bring the community together, to do the best we can to educate our children and prepare them for their futures. And if we do that well, it helps us as we get older.
Hi, Mike.
Hi, Dan.
Hi, Mike. We've, of the board, certainly had our disagreements, and we're no different than any other board. So having leading and segueing into that question, it's obviously, it's obvious to me, after a short time here, that we're not always going to get the right vote for what we want. So you can take, and I feel really odd asking this question, if you can take a second or two and just say, how do you prevail, or how do you move forward, you know, not actually getting the vote you want? And how, how do you, your personality interacts with the board when sometimes it may not be on that side of the fence where you think it should be?
One of the reasons why I was able to convince myself to apply and, and, to do this is that I know most of the members of this board, and have known many of them five years or longer. And I've been in board meetings where there are disagreements. But this board has always given each other the time and the space to speak their mind, to give their opinion, sometimes to table items that need more research and more time. And then after appropriate discussion, come to a vote. And that's the way I would proceed with it. And if the vote comes out the way I don't like it, I at least would have had my say and had a chance to hear everyone else's.
I have a last question for Mike. And this is an opportunity for you to say what you're really thinking, you know? You throw some humor in there, you know? This was really about your belief, you've had friends of working in the district, now you're new ones, a school board member perhaps, if you were appointed. What do you believe is the largest challenge facing our district on part? And then why do you feel you're qualified to help us solve that challenge?
I think the largest challenge that faces this district, but not only this district, perhaps all school districts, is finding the resources that are needed to support the staff in a way that gives them the best opportunity to help our children, our students. And I've sat through five years of budget deliberations and discussions about resources. I've been part of, and privy to some of the personnel decisions that have been made in order to find the best people to do the best they can for our students. I don't think it's particularly pressing to this board in the way it is to some other school districts. I think this school district's a very good school district. I think financially, it's been taken care of very well by the administrators in this district and the board. There's been reasonable compromise, but it's a very good school district, and I would say that's my, take one of the biggest challenges that, that we would have on a year-in, year-out basis. I don't think there's any crisis going on right now that I could say Gettysburg area school district needs to really focus on this or that and take special action.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike. So that concludes our interview at this point. All right? So at seven o'clock sharp, we'll begin our regular business meeting. So if you'd just have a seat, Mike, until the motion comes. Hit the bad news. Anybody need any breaks here before we... If everybody's ready, then we're just going to... Call the order of this meeting of the Gettysburg area school district, order of school directors on this Monday, August 20th, 2018. Jane, all eight board members are present, count them four. Okay? At this point, stand, place a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice of all.
Thank you. Okay, our first item then is that his policy membership, that the board discussed and take action to approve Mike Williams as a school board director, effective August 20th, 2018, through the remainder of the 2019 term.
Make a motion.
Second. There's been a motion. Second. Are there any, is there any discussion or further comments? That's where I call the vote. Okay? Al, or excuse me, I start with Kathy.
Are you sure?
No, I got it.
Okay, yes.
Got it. Al?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mike, you have been elected, and at this point, Tam is going to swear to you, and then you could join us. Congratulations.
I state your name.
I'm Mike Williams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with the deputy.
Of my office with the deputy.
Thank you. Congratulations.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay.
You have been here long enough to thank us, yeah.
Are there any notices and communications? All right, hearing none. Any citizen participation?
No, sir.
None. Right. Four committee reports. Jim?
Yes, sir. I want to report that on the 11th of August, I participated in the Pennsylvania School Board Association Board Platform Committee, where we set the platform to present to the legislature for the desires of the Pennsylvania School Board Association. It was very informative and very good.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, the policy committee was scheduled to meet on the 14th of August. However, we didn't have anything ready to go, so we canceled that meeting, and the next meeting is the 11th of September.
And Lee?
There's no report from the communications committee.
So, finance, buildings, and grounds will be working over the next month to complete an agenda for the September meeting, that's the third Thursday at 4:00 PM here.
All right, thank you. Any other reports? Okay, Dr. Perrin, program information.
Get over to Mr. Fordham and Mr. Crosby regarding some items that are on the agenda tonight.
Sure, you should be real quick. We have three items on the board agenda tonight, and we've included the capital improvements program. First two are related to the bleacher install at Lincoln Elementary School, the actual bleachers themselves, and we're going to refinish the gym floor while we have the bleachers out, out between time to do it. And the third item is a replacement of the sound system in the high school autoport. But I'm glad that answering questions for the work when the lights come on.
Thanks, Lee.
Good evening. Well, it's official, the summer academy professional development sessions concluded, because today was the first day for teachers in the 18, 19 school year. So like many people right now, I'm wondering where their summer went. But it was a busy summer with professional learning, and most exciting, hiring our two instructional coaches, and Ann, our new director of education technology, who started officially today as her first day, and she was already consumed by, questions by teachers and training new teachers on our learning management system. So thank you, because it's been a wonderful addition, and everybody's very excited about it.
Great.
Excited for students to start with us on Wednesday. Now, we have the district opening tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM over at the middle school. For those that can join us, we're excited about kicking off the school year with a number of positive messages and, you know, share some, share some of the focus areas for this year in terms of getting that one degree or that one step better that we try to do on a yearly basis. As the school year was about to kick off, did send a communication out to parents and the community today regarding safety, just because that was a heavy conversation this past spring before we left. So there's a lot of work done this past spring and throughout the summer as we prepared for fall of 18. And that work basically continues. It's never, it's never done work or finished work, because you're always kind of assessing and reevaluating where you are. But we used some of the feedback, the informal feedback, because they're still preparing a final report from MG Tactical, to kind of set some of those goals. Number of conversations with the larger district safety team, the district administrative team, then back to the safety team, and then, and then to kind of set the stage for this year. The number of things that we've been doing, will continue doing, based on those conversations. All of our buildings will continue to be locked with one point of entry. All parents and visitors should enter through the main entrance and sign in during the school hours. There will be a consistent greeting read at each building, and that information will be asked of every individual, regardless of how well the office staff may recognize your voice or your face. So we ask parents not to take offense to that. It's simply one more layer that we're trying to put in place to make sure that our kids are safe. So I would expect to be asked the same questions that they are whenever I approach a building. So we respect that of everybody. Big on making sure that everybody has their ID badges this year as well. There will still be security events such as, such as football games and some of the extracurriculars. And as you all aware, because you did it, we extended the SRO agreement over the next four years to support our efforts there. Couple of things that are, are either new for this fall, or just would say maybe more consistent. There's now a safety tip line. Andrew's been working with that, and we'll roll it out tomorrow during the district opening. As a, as a school community, we're kind of be trained for run, hide, fight training, which is different than the district was trained in several years ago. So we're going to embark on this now so that we have kind of a benchmark, and we know everybody's been trained this year. And then basically, that training will just occur on a yearly basis. That way, we know that we're picking up new faculty and staff on a yearly basis to comply with Act 44 of the state. We've done a couple of things. One is, we'll require all of our buildings to do at least two safety drills each school year, and one in the fall, one in the spring. Those will be in place of what used to be fire drills, and then the normal fire drills will still occur. And so we'll, we'll do the safety drills once we've had a chance to train the faculty in run, hide, fight training. And our, our school resource officer will work with MG Tactical as a, as a resource to have that. And that's really kind of the most, the most common or the most placid training that's been going on recently, and it's been endorsed by the FBI and the Department of Homeland Security. So that's, that's the training that we're currently moving to. We started the Lunch with Law Enforcement initiative, so hopefully local law enforcement will take us up on our offer and stop in for breakfast, lunch, just have a cup of coffee, get to know the kids, get to know our buildings, and we want our relationship, obviously, to continue to be as positive as it has been. We're fortunate that law enforcement stops by our schools, and we're hoping that this is just one more incentive to allow that to happen on a random basis. And District Safety and Security Commission, Committee will continue to meet, and, you know, each spring, we'll continue to look at the things we've done the previous year to see if there are any best practice changes to implement for the following year. And another thing that was required, Act 44, is Mr. Crosby has been appointed as the district school safety and security coordinator. That's just required as each superintendent to appoint somebody, with the understanding that Mr. Crosby doesn't work in a vacuum, and we've got a team, we've got a team of people working with him just on a lot of this. It's been Wayne and Tom, myself, our school resource officer, and John Lewis has also been involved, the student services director. So this is basically appointing a point of contact, but understanding that safety's everybody's job, and we'll continue to work with that. So we just wanted to get that information out to families ahead of, ahead of school starting, just because it was a, it was a common conversation this spring in school and out. So, thank you.
All right, we move on to business personnel. Item 10.1, two, and including item 10.6.
Sumo.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none? Call the vote. Al?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I vote yes. Next item is under supplementals, item 15.1, district-wide supplemental positions.
Sumo. Second.
Discussion.
I have questions. There are four positions not yet filled, three after school, academic program coordinators, and one chorus festival and ensembles director. Do we know when these positions will be filled?
They typically aren't filled until after school gets into session, and the chorus festival director was Jamie Bowman, who's on sabbatical right now, so I think they're still trying to work out what they're going to do, because that's a pretty difficult position for a long-term sub to take, so I think we're still working through that. I also have the high school and the middle school supplementals that will be approved at the next meeting, so we are still picking through our supplemental list.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none? Call the vote. Bill?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
I vote yes. On behalf of the board, Pam, I want to thank you for the work putting that all together, working hard, dealing with all the interviews. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you. Hopefully, we get a good start to this school year. Next item is business and finance, item 18.1, two, and including item 18.4.
Sumo. Second.
Discussion.
I would particularly recommend approving on 18, 1, 2, and 3. Those were on the five-year plan.
The other discussion, questions? Hearing none? Call the vote. Carrie?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
I vote yes. The last item is 19.1, pay the bills totally.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Hearing none? Call the vote. Kenny?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
I vote yes. That concludes all the items of business for tonight. That's information.
Appropriate place?
Yes, we're at that point. Who did the order?
Just on the go of the order, after our first meeting, or whatever you want to call it, public meeting we had with the Borough Council, just to follow up, I strongly encourage you, Mr. President, to look at, you know, the committee you have in place, members, whether you add, subtract from it, and delegate them to go back to the borough in the county, come back with what reportedly is the sticking point, which is the schedules and the way we're going to float out from this on this LURDA project, and then be able to come back to the board here in a relatively appropriate time and give the recommendation in a public meeting as to where the school board's vested interests in this particular project.
Okay. Fully noted.
I'd like to thank Dr. Perrin and President Womper for scheduling that public meeting on LURDA today. As you all know, I've been critical of some of our administrative meetings recently, particularly the 16 July meeting. And so I think the more we do in public, the better. Republics are messy business. Thank you.
Thank you, though. Any other?
Quick comment, Carlos, if I may?
Yes.
Just, I'd like to revisit the program report, just very briefly, that Dr. Perrin shared about school safety. And as we start the school year, I just think that, in my mind, that's a really important event. And when I got, I think it was Andrew's communication today that outlined pretty much what Dr. Perrin had said, I just want to publicly commend Dr. Perrin and the rest of the administrative team, and I'm thankful that Wayne will be our point person, and I know he has a lot of other duties. But I also see that that's an important duty, and I perceive him to be a very con-
and I perceive him to be a very conscientious person. Safety, school safety and security is not always convenient, and especially, I think we take for granted sometimes, because we live in a very safe community, about leaving doors open, and just we get a little bit lax at times. So I, I think the procedures that we had in place, in conjunction with the new procedures, made me feel a lot better as a board member, as a grandparent of a kindergartner that's starting on Wednesday over at Lincoln, and basically as a community member, that we're really doing our due diligence as a board. And I feel very proud tonight. Once, once I read that communication, it just made me feel really proud to be a part of the organization. I think that's all I have to say about that. Thank you for your efforts, and a big thank you to the entire committee and everyone who participated in making that come to fruition. And, uh, and I, and I do think the run, hide, fight program, I've seen and studied that a lot. I think that is a very worthwhile program, and I think good choice. Thank you.
It's, it's, it's an appropriate time to make that change, so we're excited about it. And, uh, and, uh, Tom and Wayne did a lot of the heavy lifting on taking MG Tactical here and getting that feedback, so appreciate their efforts.
Thank you. Anything else? Go to the order. Okay, next board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 4th, at seven o'clock. But it's on Tuesday because Wednesday is Labor Day. All right? We are in...